Okay. It is six o'clock, and I'd like to open our regular meeting for June the sixth. And Commissioner Rushing had the invocation, but he's not here today. So I ask that you, if you choose to, bow your head in prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight, and we ask that you give us wisdom in all the decisions that we have to make. We ask that you protect our fire and police, EMS, and soldiers all around the world. We also ask that you give Ms. Lynn West comfort in her recent mother passing. We ask all these things in your name. Amen. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item, proclamation and awards. Mike Reese Day proclamation. Me and Mike go back a lot of years. I actually built a home at, when I was a teacher at the Career Center, and it was moved by truck to its site. I'm sorry. Okay. Proclamation recognizing Mike Reese for his longtime service and dedicated efforts with Union Anson County Habitat for Humanity. That whereas Union Anson County Habitat for Humanity is a Christian nonprofit housing organization that relies on volunteers to build and improve homes in partnership with individuals and families in need of a decent and affordable place to live. And whereas Mike Reese has been the executive director of Union Anson County Habitat for Humanity for 20 years and has never once called out of work. And whereas Union Anson County Habitat for Humanity has helped 413 families and built 144 homes locally and 45 homes internationally under the leadership of Mike Reese. And whereas Mike Reese works tirelessly along with staff, numerous volunteers, and members of partner organizations to accomplish the organization's mission of seeking to put God's love into action and bringing people together to build homes, communities, and hope. And whereas Mike Reese has helped grow affiliate assets to more than $6 million for Anson County Habitat for Humanity. Whereas prior to his work with Habitat for Humanity, Mike Reese spent 17 years with JARS, an international ministry based in Waxall. And whereas Mike Reese has been involved in other Union County community organizations, particularly the Monroe Rotary Club, of which he has been a member for 20 years and received the Paul Harris Fellow recognition for his contribution. And whereas Mike Reese has been instrumental in the construction of 150 Rotary International Homes in Honduras, as well as helped make history by making Union Anson County Habitat for Humanity the only affiliate to build in three counties and two different states, as well as in Honduras. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Union County Board of Commissioners expresses its sincere appreciation to Union Anson County Habitat for Humanity and to Mike Reese for his years of leadership and dedicated service to the Union County community, and does hereby proclaim Tuesday, I'm sorry, Monday, well, we're going to proclaim it tomorrow, Tuesday, June the seventh, 2022, as Mike Reese Day in Union County. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be made a part of the official minutes of the Union County Board of Commissioners, and that an official copy of the expression of the board's appreciation be presented to Mike Reese, adopted this sixth day of June 2022. And folks, I've known this guy. I'll come around there. He could have been ten days as long and still not described. Mike Reese, he is truly a gentleman. Yes, sir. Next up, we had amended the agenda in order to hear from some of our Union County Public School Board members. I'm going to take the budget public hearing, item out of order, item 22-378. All in favor? Aye. I will recognize Board of Education Chairman Melissa Merrill for this presentation. Following the presentation from the Board of Education, I will recognize Blake Hart. And then we will hear from those signed up to speak during the public hearing. Ms. Merrill?
Thank you very much. Do we have the? It should be on there. I don't know what it's named. Let me see. Is it this one? Let me get my power key on it up. That's SPCC. Give me. I'm like here, eh? Ah, give me. He's coming. Give me one second. Okay. Thank you. We clicked on the wrong one. Good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Manager. We have broken this down into four different parts tonight. I'm going to quickly go through the operating side of the budget. Then Mrs. Hightail, Vice Chair and Chair of Facilities and Finance, is going to talk to you about the capital. And then Mr. Sides is here as well. And then we're going to turn it over to Dr. Houlihan for some closing comments with recent events in our country. But starting on the operating side, let's just make sure we got here. So this version that we have sent before you tonight with the highlights in the red line, the only difference from the version that you received from the board approval in May is now based off of the county manager's recommendation to you. After hearing the county manager's recommendation, we would be approximately $7 million short of our original request. And so what we have done is we have highlighted if you were to move forward with the manager's recommendation that eliminates $7 million out of operating, everything that you see in red here would be unfunded. And that includes facilities, technology, 30 new teaching positions for grades four through 12. We would not be able to fund security, to provide adequate security at our board meetings. As you know, over the last couple of years, we have needed additional officers from Monroe and the Sheriff Department for protest and people outside of the meetings. Oddly enough, some of the people outside of our meetings are not even from Union County. They're from other states and other counties. So we have needed those additional officers. An increase in the board member stipend that would not take effect until 2023 to bring the Board of Education for Union County in line with other districts across the state. Investing in our employees is one of our biggest concerns that you'll see here. We would be unfunded almost $5 million. Last year, when we had conversations with the liaisons and the county manager, one of the things that I took away was that we needed to start bringing to you what the market analysis was. And we've done this since Dr. Houlihan joined us in 2016, going department by department, and then doing a market analysis to see if we were in line. This particular year, based on your recommendation last year to start bringing those market analysis to you, we looked at our facilities department and our skilled trades employees that ironically can leave Union County Public Schools and make more money for Union County government than with us. But we feel like the request here that is potentially not funded would bring us closer and be able to maintain those employees in our facilities department. They have not had a raise since 2018. And the next one is extremely critical for the market adjustment for our teaching assistance. North Carolina has, that has continued to go down, down, down. And we would need to do this for our teacher assistants because they are currently not being compensated, sometimes equivalent to our child nutrition. And they're in the classroom helping with our students. So facilities and teacher assistance is a big ask tonight for you to consider this market analysis, based on our conversations from last year. Supplemental increases for our assistant principals, they have not had a raise since 2011. So we wanted to bring that to you this year. And you can see for $358,000, we would be able to make that right for our assistant principals in the building. That carry a very big responsibility for all the things that our principals, you know, are not doing. They deal with discipline. They truly are the vice presidents within these schools, helping principals run these large schools. So again, they have not had a raise since 2011, if you would please consider that. Our certified staff, for our certified staff that are, have experienced between 50 and 25 years is currently not getting an increase from the state. And so we wanted to bring that for consideration to you, that our, some of our most experienced teachers that make Union County Public Schools such a great district were not getting raises unless we were able to get that increase locally. And we had also looked at providing basically 10-type scholarships or 60 renewals for teachers that would consider applying for their National Board certification. And we've had a lot of conversations with Wingate University and SPCC, working with our teachers, you know, that would be very interested in getting their National Board certification. So that's on there, too. I do want to express there is an urgency when we talk about investing in our employees. This is a huge ask, and it is because we are, we are working with approximately 55 to 60 teachers right now to get their licensure completed so that they can return back in August. Then we have six other non-renewals. We have 104 total teachers that are vacancies, approximately 104 teacher vacancies. Then we have custodians. We have 67 vacancies, child or school nutrition, 27 vacancies, and transportation, 17 vacancies, which for bus drivers, 17 is probably the lowest number I've seen in my eight years with Union County Public Schools. It usually runs 25 to 30 vacancies. So to even see it at 17 is definitely better than what I've seen in the past. So in total, we are roughly around 220 vacancies for you to consider investing in Union County residents, our taxpayers, and keeping them employed in Union County Public Schools, with us being the largest employer in the county. So please take a look at, you know, what we will be able to cover with a manager's recommendation, but the employees and the items that we will not be able to fund without your consideration. On the second page, we have student growth. And when we come before you tonight, I really want to impress upon you that we're not coming just for Union County Public School students. We have approximately 41,000 students. But our budget request to you also includes almost 4,200 charter school students. So the budget that you would send to us is approximately $10 million. So if you send, whatever you send us, we have to take $10 million right off the top to send to charter schools, UA, Union Day, Union Prep, the Apprentice Academy. So any Union County student that is going to a charter school is also in this budget, along with approximately 230 UC, North Carolina Virtual students, which is approximately 45,000 total. So when, when you look at the total student enrollment, please know that that's your Union County Virtual students, your charter students, and your UCSF students when you take this into consideration. Finally, we were, Union County Public Schools, I believe we've been told are the, is the only school district out of 116 school districts that does not fund middle school sports. So this is actually something that we've been working on and discussing as a board for two or three years, and that was in our request this year. And one new position, which would be for a coach. The last item you will see is $40,000 to begin doing pre-employment drug screening. In the past, it's been random, or when an event has come up, you know, we call employees to do a drug test. But we have not done that in pre-employment, and we would like to begin doing that with your approval. It's a very small ask there. So our, when we sent this over to you in May, the first, the first week in May, our request was for operating almost $124 million. The county manager's increase was 5.9 million. So the unfunded red lines that you see today are $6.5 million. So last year, in our budget request, you were able to meet 68% of our request. And today's presentation, based on the county manager, what, what he would recommend, you would only be meeting 48% of our request. So I wanted to point that out to you. And the last thing that I will leave you with, I know in the past, Commissioner Williams, I just wanted you to know that we're still, our state funding, we're ranked number 116. In local funding, we have dropped to 37. And federal, we're at 105. So we're still kind of in the same, same dilemma that we were with state and federal funding, and we've actually taken a drop with, with local funding as well. So that concludes operating. And if you're ready to go to capital, I will ask Vice Chair Kathy Hightail to come up.
As you can see up here, we've asked for $23.3 million for capital this year. Part of that is $19.5 million for facilities. We have $3.1 million for the laptop leases that we have. The new thing on here is $550,000 for cybersecurity equipment and data server equipment, which is huge. And we always have the $50,000 on here for band uniforms and equipments. This year, it's Cuthbertson High School. I want to talk about capital. We have 30 schools that have projects in the capital for fiscal '23. We don't get the capital. The capital money is approved by the county at the end of July, beginning of, end of June, beginning of July. At that point, we have about 10 weeks of summer left to get things done. Architects, designs, we have a bid process. If we only get one bid, we have to go back and rebid it. So most of our projects aren't going to get done this summer for fiscal '23. It'll be next summer because we have to, we have to go to bid, we have to do the design, we have to do all that. We only have 10 weeks in the summer to do projects because we need the students and staff to be out of the school. We have winter breaks to do two weeks of it and one week for spring break. So most of our projects are done in the summertime, in the year after the prod, after the time we get the money, and the funny, and money. We don't hold the money. The county holds the money. Until we have invoices for the projects that we're doing, then we submit that to the county, and they give us the money for the invoice. So we don't hold that money. The county holds it for us. I want to say that I don't believe that there's any mismanagement of funds in Union County Public Schools. What we need to do is do more seeking to understand the differences between the county and the school system. It shouldn't be this way. We should have meetings. We should talk about what's going on, not on Facebook. But really, we're trying. We, we have a lot of facilities to take care of, some of them aging a lot that we have to do things to, and we're going through those projects. Sometimes we don't even get bids for our, our projects because of the economy right now. And sometimes we, the budget doesn't match what the bid is, and then we can't do the project. We have to wait. We have to get more money to do it. So I just wanted to explain the process for how we do capital.
Good evening. I'll be brief. Unfortunately, we're, we are not able to get together the two boards for any kind of joint meeting this, this cycle. It's, the feedback I've received has been the fact that it's disappointing because it's a disservice to the people, the taxpayers, that there's no dialogue in a public forum between the two boards with such an important issue as funding public education in Union County. So I'm going to offer some of the points of discussion that I would have offered in a joint meeting. I want to go back to the 2021 fiscal year. Now, that's before the county made the selection to go to a fixed budget. We were still on a tax rate. And my question is, and I'll be glad to put these in writing, when we closed the books on that year, was there a surplus? Did revenues exceed the budget projections? Did collections exceed the budget projections? If so, we have traditionally always had a, what we refer to as a true-up, since it's a tax rate, after the fact, that's been applied accordingly. And then for the current 21, 21, 22 year, the board made the decision to go to a fixed budget. We have literally weeks left in this fiscal year. My question is, where do the county finances stand in this fiscal year against budget? Are revenues exceeding the budget? Are collections exceeding the budgeted amounts? If so, and I can only speak for myself, if there is a surplus and you continue your policy of only maintaining, I believe it's 20%, your fund balance, then I would support my board, if enough other members support, asking for a budget amendment of the county to help offset some of these budget items that may or may not be, depending on how things go next week, omitted from our budget. So I will follow up with these questions in writing. I would also like to propose a follow-up on Ms. Merrill's point. I think it's important, after the dust settles, that we have a collaboration between the county HR department and our HR department to get into the nuts and bolts of like responsibilities and job functions to make sure we're on a similar pay grade for tradespeople, CDL drivers, janitorial services, et cetera. I think that's important. I think it's good for the taxpayers of Union County that UCSF and county government is not competing against each other for employees. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Houlihan.
Good evening, County Commissioners and Mr. Watson and county staff. Tonight, I stand before you to advocate for an additional funding allocation that was not part of the UCSF budget, but is an allocation that we all believe critically needs to be made to one of our strongest partners, and that is Sheriff Kathy in the Union County Sheriff's Department. For the last six years, UCSF has made great strides to ensure that each and every day, our students and staff are physically, mentally, and emotionally safe across all 53 schools. With funding support from the county in prior years, we have added additional counselors to all high schools. We have partnered with DHHS to form the Union County Collaborative, which has increased, significantly increased our mental health therapist and our behavioral therapist. And we have added security measures across all schools, such as our video doorbell systems. For several years, in partnership with the Sheriff's Office, the UCSF SRO program has become, in my opinion, one of the strongest and most important aspects of physical safety in our school system, and one of the best practices highly touted across the state of North Carolina. Prior to, prior to 2020, in partnership with Sheriff Kathy and his office, our teams were able to put together a multi-year plan to expand funding allocations to the Sheriff's Department, to add SROs every year. And when the COVID pandemic hit, that plan kind of dissolved. And my request tonight to the Board of County Commissioners and to staff is to reconsider that plan and to consider funding additional SROs for the next three to four years. Doing so will help UCSF, but more importantly, help our community. And doing so will ensure that over the next three to four years, we will have a one-to-one SRO to every school ratio compared to right now. We have that in our middle and high schools, but our current elementary schools share two or three, or sorry, one SRO to two, two to three schools. We have a tremendous partnership with the Sheriff's Office. We have evaluated our current safety efforts and have come to the conclusion that this is the next step in protecting our children and our staff and making sure that a one SRO to every school ratio is needed and is the next step as we continue to focus on safety and security. So we thank you for your consideration of this request, and I thank Sheriff Kathy for your support. Thank you.
I will tell you this, I don't need to be a figurehead on the budget, but I will be voting for SROs to every school this year because I can't imagine of us choosing three and then somebody show up at the school and replace them. So I will, I don't think that I'll be. I will support 13 SROs. So I will, I don't think that I'll be, I will support 13 SROs. Sheriff Kathy, it's close whatever cost. It may be hard to find that many, they want to find that many cars because, and this is, and I guess you'd say the problem is COVID, but on the budget, I have some questions, but on the SROs, there's no question. Children are precious.
Thank you, Chairman Wray, for your comments, and we would gladly support that in partnership with the sheriff's office and...
And I always speak in my seat.
Sure.
I don't speak for any other country.
Sure. Thank you.
I was looking for Sheriff Kathy. There he is. You want me to speak? We all work on these things. You have a calling effect. We run out of anything else, they call me.
I agree with what Dr. Houlihan said. There's a lot going on in the country, a lot going on here in Union County, a lot of interest around what's happening. And, you know, certainly, we need to think about what we need to do to do things that keep our children safe. You know, some of the things that was implemented in '20 were door locks, the cameras on the doors, and where you walk up to the door, they can see the cameras. They can look out through there and see who's there. All those been done in the school. We also, we had dead spots in the school. Let me get this name right. The biodirectional amplifier. That's was putting all the schools by the county commissioner that amplified the radio signals to where we could be heard everywhere in the schools. They were dead spots all in that school. We've done a lot of things that no other county in the state does. We've set an example. Certainly, we train. The schools train. They train their students. They train their teachers. We have drills in every school. I don't, three times a year, I think, maybe four times a year. So we are well ahead of other places. We have done the little things that a lot of school systems don't. Our cards that we carry can get us in a school. Swipe that card. Every officer's got one. He can get in a school. There's a key. I'm not going to tell you where it's at, but it's in that school. We know where it's at. We can get in the classrooms. We can do a lot that a lot of places can't do, and we've trained. We've already got training scheduled, I think, for Forest Hills starting this year in the summertime. Our SROs train all summer, along with going to certification to get qualified to be a SRO. You know, it's a state requirement now that you, when you hire and put in the school a SRO, he's got to be certified by the state. So that's part of what's got to take place. But certainly, we agree that adding school resource officers is what we want to do. We'll give you a little, it's a little scary, the numbers out there, because now we're at a higher price for everything. Our cars, you can't get striping now from 3M. They don't have the striping. It's delayed. I guess it's on a boat somewhere. But a deputy sheriff, $181,976.53. That's a car. See, right now, we're having trouble getting our cars equipped so we don't have used cars to give to the SRO, which is what we've done in the past, and that's knocked that down quite a bit. But now, we don't have the used cars to do that with. So if you multiply that number, then you get the number of SROs that you want to fund. You need to think about funding a sergeant, a supervisor. It's a big deal. You know, if you don't have supervisors out there, you're talking about 13. Add one in every school. That's a big price. The equipment is what runs up the cost. It's not the salaries, by the way, of the deputies. It's the equipment and training and all the things that goes with him being equipped. If you want to use the four, if we funded four, $727,906.12 for four, that's a big number. Now, we do think that four is what you ought to think about first because we have elementary schools, we have four SROs that serve three elementary schools. We think that that's what, we need to cut those down to where they at least go to two, and in the future, you know, you can add to it. Or you can fund all of them. We're open to that. But I realize that this is a big deal in the budget, and it's come about at a time that is not planned for. Certainly, we planned for it back in '20 when the county commissioners decided to add four, and it sort of failed by the wayside during all this COVID and other stuff, and we hadn't followed through. But it's an important thing, and I think the end game is what's important. I know that we do things to safeguard our children, but I'm not foolish enough to think that it can't happen. I mean, it can happen. And I think we're working with the schools to see that the schools, they have locks on their doors. They have the doors, outside doors are locked. We think it's important that they lock every classroom. Every classroom should have that door locked. There's no reason not to do it. They've installed ventilation system in the school, so it's not a breathing issue in the classrooms. It's important that we do the things to safeguard, but at the end, I can tell you this, public wants school resource officers there. And I'll leave it at that. You got any questions or anything?
I do.
Go ahead.
If we fund 13 officers and one sergeant, you can fill those spots.
Now, I can't fill them between now and the time school starts. It'll take us a while. We're very fortunate. We are basically full. We don't have openings. We're not like a lot of places that have numerous openings. Where all our people's working, we have full, but we're out there every day looking for candidates. But you can't hire a person off the street and make him a SRO in the school because you need to have experience, you need to have the things that go to deal with those kids. They need to be trained. So, no, we can't add 13 and have them in school by the end of, by the start of next year, but...
But how long would it take? I mean, I don't want to fund something you can't use.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I don't know. We are full, and as we go forward, it'll take months to do backgrounds. It takes all the stuff that's got to happen, and then we've got to send them to SRO school, and that's during the summer. So if we can get employees to come from other agencies, you know, that's a big help, and we can do that. But to give you a time limit, I don't know. Maybe we could have a lot of them by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, Commissioner Wray?
Sheriff, the $181,000 is equipped.
That's everything.
That's everything. So the next year, that equipment, you don't get that equipment charge again?
That car, it'll come off the next year.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Thank you, Sheriff.
Yes, sir.
All right. I believe we have some people signed up. Under informal, well, I'll ask the manager, do we have people signed up to speak for informal comments? Do we want to put that in that spot?
No, not the informal comments.
Or just the...
No, you have, you have a couple of folks who were signed up for UCS funding. I think this is the appropriate time for them to speak.
Okay. Do it now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Donald Nelson. And I'm going to read, is Donald Nelson here? I want to read some instructions to you, Mr. Nelson. Each speaker must address the board from the lectern and begin their remarks by giving their name, stating whether they are a resident of Union County, indicating the municipality within which they reside, if any, and stating the topic about which they intend to speak. Each speaker will have three minutes to make remarks. A speaker may not yield any of his or her time to another speaker. Speakers must be courteous in their language and presentation. Restatements or repetitive comments by the same speaker, whether at the same or separate meeting, may be ruled out of order and terminated by the chair of the board. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Speakers may leave, written comments and/or supporting documents, if any, with the clerk of the board. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Commissioners, others here. I have to tell you, this is my first time at something like this, so I'm going to be as quick as I can be within the time allotment. My name is Donald Nelson. I am a resident of Union County in Waxaw. Does that, does that check that box?
Address.
I'm sorry?
Your address.
It's on ours, 3,005 Arsdale Road in Waxaw, North Carolina, 28173. Does that suffice? Okay. As I mentioned, this is my first time here. I come from the private sector, Dr. Houlihan. I have a daughter in our Chinese Mandarin, nice, Mandarin immersion program at Kensington Elementary, and I have a daughter at Cuthbertson Middle School. As I've come to do research and learn about some of the challenges that we seem to be facing, especially in lieu of current events in Uvalde and other places over the last couple of years, it's been, it's been an education, to say the least, for me over the last week in digging into where our money is coming from and how we're spending it, how we're allocating it relative to budget, and where we're funding and our commitment behind making sure, not just that our schools are safe, that, to me, is kind of table stakes these days, but that we're focused on both the lower-performing students in the county and our, in my town, as well as the making sure that we're delivering out into the world the best students that we can at the top, right? And taking care of those in the middle. And so, you know, when I hear some of this about the school resource officers, and again, I have to kind of preface it with, I come from, just by way of background, I've been chief digital officer for publicly traded companies over the last 20 years at a C-suite level, and so have managed budgets considerably larger than what we're, what we have here. And, you know, it's always about making tough choices when you have to budget, depending on where you're at with revenue and where you're at with increasing costs. So I think from my, from my perspective, just as a parent and as a taxpayer here, you know, my concern is obviously safety first, and, you know, I don't understand why we wouldn't fund the 13 resource officers, school resource officers that you mentioned. But I have an equal concern, which is I hear we have 220 vacancies, and so, across the county in the education system. And when I hear vacancies like that, that means that there's less grownups and adults with eyes on the property and on the kids and what's happening around there. And so that, that's a disconnect for me, candidly, sir, when I also hear that we're not competitive in our, in our compensation, both to recruit and retain quality folks. That's a concern, right? I've been here, I moved here in the beginning, or at the end of 2016, and, you know, lots happened over these last five, six years, right? And so it's, it's hard for me to get my head around when I see the growth in both commerce and, and traffic and residents coming in and the taxes that are attached to that, that it doesn't seem that our spending and our investment in both our schools, our kids, our teachers, and our communities is commensurate with that. So I believe I'm approaching out of time. I'm happy to take any questions if needed, or, you know, I don't know the process, but it's, it's a pleasure to see, see the folks who are here and those who aren't. And so, you know, I appreciate the opportunity to come and address you all. Thank you.
You did great. Kristen Smith. Is anybody that signed up that I didn't call your name? I thought you had already spoke on funding.
Well, I wanted to speak on the bond. I thought I had signed up. The link I used, I thought, was for informal comments. Evidently, it's during your agenda item on the bond.
Right. That'll be the, that's what I was saying. We're just taking, all right, and the other lady that raised her hand over here. Come forward and state your name.
So we're, Mr. Chairman, just so we're clear and there's no confusion, these comments are related to the public hearing for the budget.
For the budget.
Right. So there'll be informal comments, period, at another portion in the meeting.
Okay. All right, we'll close the public hearing now with no further comments, but with you two speaking at a later thing. Okay. I'm going to recognize Blake Hart.
Great. Thank you, Chairman Wray, members of the Board of County Commissioners and County Manager Watson. I appreciate what we've heard so far and the comments that have been made as part of that presentation. I'm going to, to share a presentation that I shared a portion of with, with you a few weeks ago on the '26 and adding, layering in a little more detail, a little more nuance into the county manager's recommendation for FY 2023. I want to begin by showing a chart, a table that shows the assessed valuation for Union County leading into the FY 2023 budget. You'll see a table that gives you information back from FY '20 through the proposal FY '23. The real property values are set to increase by 3.5% in FY 2023. The value of a penny is, will be 3.73, and the proposed tax rate included in this recommended budget is 58.8, and that is a no-tax rate increase budget over FY '22. The assessed valuation leads into the county tax base, obviously, but also the home values, which leads into the home values times the tax rate equals the median tax bill in the county. This, this chart shows the change of that over, over the period of 10 or 11 years from FY '12. from FY 12 to FY 23. The median tax bill changes are driven by home values, not by, by tax rate. The median home values has, have increased 82.3% since FY 23, FY 13, and the median tax bill has increased only 61%. And there's, in FY 23, there's a slight increase expected in the median home value above FY 22. Now, the, we talked about the, the largest revenue source in the county, which is ad valorem, which is driven, of course, by the county tax rate. The second largest revenue source is the, our local, local option sales taxes. In FY 2022, the collections to date exceed the, the budget by 17.1%. And that is, currently, we have, we've received nine payments or nine distributions from the state. Of course, there's 12 periods in a, in a fiscal year. There's three more that we are waiting to receive. If that 17.1% reflects if we, if we only collect the actual budget for the next three periods, then we would exceed the budget by 17.1% for FY 22. Final collections could be as much as 25% if we continue to exceed the, the budget over the next three periods as we have over the prior nine periods. The FY 23 proposed budget assumes that FY 2022 calculations will be around 65 million. That would be an increase of 21.8% over the, the prior, over the FY 22. And it would be enough, that would include a growth rate into FY 23 of 3.75%. The 3.75% growth rate for 23 is in line with the North Carolina Department of Revenue, also the League of Municipalities that provide guidance to counties and municipalities throughout the year. Also, the UNC School, UNC Charlotte School of Economics projects a GDP growth in North Carolina of 2.7%. That will, specifically in local sectors of agriculture, an increase of 7%. An increase of 7% in business and professional services of 7% and then other 3.75%. And I listed those three because those are major drivers of our local economy here in, in Union County. This table, or this chart represents the sales tax that are collected by the state and then distributed back to counties and municipalities. Over time, the, the lowest line, the green line, represents 2016. And then the, the highest line, the brown line, represents FY 22 or the current year. And you can see that the, each year follows a similar pattern as far as when the spikes and when the valleys are. And the highest line, the brown line, represents collections by the state of 22% above prior year actuals. So in the, the slide earlier, I showed that our, our collections are in excess of our, our budget. And it's the same phenomenon all around the state and all around counties and, and cities around the state. The collections are influenced by newly taxed online purchases and higher volume of online, online shopping. The, of course, we're, we're experiencing historical inflation of 8.3%, pushing prices higher. If consumption remains steady, then the corresponding sales taxes will increase as well. This view is our, our, all general fund revenues in one table. The assessed property valuation expects to grow by 3.5%. That's, of course, our ad valorem tax rate. This reflects strong real estate, or strong real estate market and increasing migration into the county. Our local option sales tax shows a growth of, an expected growth of 26.4%. Again, that's in line with, with what the state has seen across the state and what they expect to see into the next year. The, the FY 22 sales tax actuals are expected to be 11.4% higher than, in FY 22 than FY 21 actuals. And it could be between 17 and 25% higher in, when we finish FY 22, based on what the next three months holds. Intergovernmental revenues are increasing due to growth in Medicaid hold harmless payments. And we've talked about that on previous occasions, from the state of about 2.8 million. And FY 23 general fund revenues are expected to grow as a whole of 2.9%. Now, looking at expenses as a whole, employee compensation is going to grow at 3% with class and comp at just under $1 million. And we'll annualize mid-year positions, FY 22 enhancement positions that were approved in FY 22, the annualization of those, since those were funded as mid-year, mid-year positions, is just over $800,000 also. You'll notice that the employee compensation benefits is our second highest expenditure after payment to outside organizations, which is our payments to schools. Our, we're funding OPEB. Our health and, health fund will increase by 2.6 million. The retirement contribution, contribution to the, to the state pension system will also increase in FY 23. Operating costs includes newly opened facilities, increased fuel prices. The fuel budget for FY 23 is increasing over $1 million, which is 121% increase over FY 22. There's no need to elaborate more on that. Also increases in software and utilities. To begin the, the budget process, the County Manager required a 2% target reduction to all department operational budgets, which ended up being around $500,000. And that was the, the first step in the budget process to begin with a, with a direct decrease. County services are increasing by 1.4%. Again, when you exclude increases in this recommended budget of, to schools, SPCC and EMS, which are our very important partners, county services are only increasing by 1.4% within the, the general fund. In FY 21, the, the expense grew by 1%. In FY 22, the, the expenses were budgeted to increase by 8.38%. That was mostly due to some fund balance appropriation of available fund balance that was on hand, that was used for one-time expenses and capital expenses. And then in 23, their minimal fund balance use is, is planned in FY 23, coming, coming down from over $14 million in '22 to just over $600,000 in FY 23. And in FY 22, the end-of-year projections indicate that actual spending growth will be 5.8%. And that's compared to the budgeted increase of 8.38%. We expect will only increase actuals of 5.8%. And that's, if you look at those three years in a window, which I think you could look at those as the, the COVID-affected years, the average of those three years increase is 3.23% from FY 21, '22, and '23. '21, we were just at the, at the, the precipice of the beginning of the COVID period. '22, we're, we're dealing with the results. And '23, we're coming out of the COVID period and we're, we're back to modest, sustainable growth of around 3% or below.
One question before you move on for the information for people in, in here.
Sure.
If you would explain to them the process, those sales taxes are eye-popping, but we have to split them with 14 municipalities, is that correct? And 18 fire districts.
We do, this portion included in the budget is just the portion received in the general fund of the county. This portion received by the VFDs and the-
It's not included?
It's, it's excluded from the general fund.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, this does include the portion that's dedicated to school debt. There's about, about 30% is dedicated to pay off school debt first.
Okay.
Good point.
Thank you.
Yep. This slide is a representation of county personnel or FTE amounts. The blue bars represent the county population. The red line represents the full-time employees per 1,000 residents. It's a comparison of how are our staffing levels compared to the growth in population? Are we, are we growing very rapidly? Are we, are we not keeping up with population growth? What you'll see there is that there's a slight increase to county staffing levels per 1,000 residents as compared to FY 22. In FY 22, there are 4.5 FTEs per thousand residents. In FY 23, there are, it's recommended that there would be 4.52. The, and if you go back to the first column there, that represents FY 2008. And that goes back to just before the Great Recession. And if you follow a few years after that, you'll see that staffing levels went down by, by population because there were, there were reductions in staffing levels that made in order to balance the budget during those tough years. And in the FY 23 amount, 4.52 is lower than where, where we were before the recession at 4.76, but I would say we're, we're, we're back to where we were at that point. The, in your proposed budget book, your recommended budget book, there's a tab titled "The Personnel Overview: Proposed Position Expansion List", and that'll give you a breakdown of all the positions that are increasing and FY, or are, are recommended increase in the FY 23 budget. And that'll, that'll detail out that in '23, the recommended budget adds 22.33 positions in the general fund, 14 positions in Union County Water, and six positions in the solid waste fund. And as a way to mitigate expense and to, to, to moderate growth and expenditures, all non-law enforcement enhancement positions in FY 23 are funded at 80%. And that's to account for the time it takes to post a position, recruit, interview, make final decisions, and actually extend a position and bring someone on board to discount that gap there. So we're not over-budgeting that people would come on board on July 1st. That's not realistic. We know that we are very fortunate in Union County to have great partners in our volunteer fire departments. They're a great resource for us, and they do a great job serving our, our population. This, this, this representation is the 18, I believe, volunteer fire departments broken into two lists, just so you can see those. You'll see the value of a penny in those individual districts, the FY 22 adopted tax rate, and the FY 23 proposed tax rate. The general fund as a whole will contribute 6.14 million to the VFDs in FY 23. That's an increase of just under $800,000 from the prior year, or an increase of about 14 and a half percent from FY 22. The additional funding for VFDs provides for additional staff, increased firefighter pay, increased fuel costs, and the replacement of dilapidated equipment and buildings that are in great need of, of attention. The, in FY 22, the county established an SCBA replacement fund. That's air mask and air tanks that have a, a short, a limited time of use. And in '22, in '23, the, the fund will, will include $300,000 to, that will be dedicated to replace SCBA equipment in Wesley Chapel. And it will rotate year after year based on the need that year. Various VFD tax rates are decreasing due to increasing expected sales tax revenues, similar to what we talked about in the general fund. The, the same phenomenon is, exists anywhere the sales taxes are received. And each VFD fund, or VFD district receives their own individual sales tax allocation. And one, one thing, you'll notice the line for the Providence VFD there in the upper right is highlighted yellow. That's a correction of an oversight on my part from the presentation you received on the 26th. The tax rate for the Providence district should, should match the tax rate for Wesley Chapel, given that Wesley Chapel provides service to the Providence district. That they, they, they receive the same service and that the intention has been that this, they would have the same tax rate as well as Wesley Chapel. So I apologize, that's, that was an oversight on my part. And we will make that adjustment in the adopted budget to make that change. Investing employees, employees are, are, are very important for the County Manager and, of course, the, the board and the community. The, this is a list of investments in employees in the general fund. It maintains commitment to employees, pay per performance and merit pay, increase to retirement contributions mandated by the state pension fund, increases to health and dental fund to strengthen and stabilize employee health fund over time, and also to annualize the class and compensation adjustments in FY 22 that were funded in FY, I'm sorry, that were funded in FY 23 mid-year, and to annualize those in FY 23. If you remember, those were budgeted to begin on January 1 and to roll into FY 23 as well for annualization. So that it'll, that, that's the cost to do that into FY 23. We, we're in a period of growth here in Union County, which is, which is, which is great that we're a community of choice. This is a list of the new facilities that have been funded to be, to their, their opening or operations of new facilities. This is the cost to fund those over the past few years. You'll see the list in, in 20, FY 21, what was funded, '22, what was funded, and what's proposed in FY 23, to open those facilities on staggered timelines based on their completion schedule. The, the list of proposed funding does not include any new building, maintenance, or facility staff, so that those buildings will be maintained by the existing staffing levels in the facilities department. And the new library is scheduled to come online during the third quarter of FY 2024, so they won't be included on this list, but they will in FY 2024. Another key piece of the Manager's Recommended Budget is the, are the community partners. We have traditionally funded between 10 and 12 community partners in Union County. And we went through a competitive application process for FY 23. And the Manager is recommending the addition, funding of four new community partners. One is the Humane Society, which the program is to expand low-cost spay and neuter services. The next one is New Covenant Community Development Center. And that's a development of a science and technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics STEAM program to increase opportunities for, for lifelong success for local youth here in, in the Monroe area. The Arc of Union in Cabarrus Counties, a Life Like Yours program advocates for inclusion for those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And lastly, the Union County Crisis Assistance Ministry, with their crisis intervention program, assists individuals and families experiencing short-term financial difficulty to prevent homelessness. This is, going into education funding now, this is an overview of the, of, of the school's requests. So we've, we've been through that in some detail, so I'm gonna move forward to the next slide. This is a representation of the recommended funding for education, which includes UCPS and SPCC. UCPS FY 23 operating request reflects a 13.3% increase over FY 22. In total, that's an increase of over $17 million. UCPS FY 23 proposed budget increases their allocation by 5.3%, which would be compared to the county, growth of the county government at 1.4%. UCPS recommended budget includes $2 million to annualize FY 22 class and compensation increases in, in addition to a 3.5% growth, which matches the organic growth of the, the local tax base and the local value of a penny. The SPCC budget request reflects a 12.9% increase over the '22 adopted budget, just under $400,000. The recommended budget for SPCC includes $107,000, or again, matching the 3.5% expected organic growth rate to the, to the county tax base. In '23, SPCC debt payments will be 3.63 million, with long-term needs projected at just under $70 million through 2030. And UCPS debt payments will be 36.3 million, again, projected long-term needs, growing over time. 15.4% of county debt service payments support county projects. 77% of, of annual debt payments support UCPS projects. And just under 8% of debt payments support projects for SPCC. This is just a representation of the County Manager's Proposed Budget, broke down by function, which would be a higher level than just department. For example, the cultural and recreational is mostly park and rec and libraries. Human services, of course, we know human services are, public safety is the sheriff, EMS, 911, emergency management. So this is just a breakdown of the percent of total budget that each of these areas represents in the, the recommended budget. And so the public safety represents just under 18% of the total budget. And FY 23 education is just under 50%. General government is 13%. And those numbers are fairly consistent every time. There's not much fluctuation year over year of those numbers.
Blake?
Yeah.
Is there any debt service in those numbers?
The, this does include debt service and, I'm sorry, this is proposed debt service. I'm sorry. Then my next slide.
Okay.
I think I advanced the slide too quick, I'm sorry. This is, this includes operating and debt service. In this calculation, the next slide is just debt service pulled out. Thank you. So the next slide is, is just debt service on its own. And you'll see that cultural recreational, again, that's parks and rec and libraries is 2.5% total debt payments. And public safety is 8.2%. And then education as a whole is 82%, just to, just to show how that, that breakout looks in FY 22. And the total debt service is increasing slightly in, in FY 23 just because of, as debt's being paid off, the debt payments needed are a little bit, a little bit smaller. This slide is, is the highlight, highlights of the, the recommended budget. I've mentioned most of these bullet points already, so I won't, I won't repeat all of them. But there's a few that I'd like to just go over. Just a, a quick reminder that the, the budget process began with a, a directed 2% reduction by the Manager for all departmental operational budgets. The Manager required all departments to only submit enhancement requests that, that were, could be defined and justified as, as mission critical. And the departments definitely did their diligence and responded with, with quite a significant number, fewer number of requests in, in '23. There was decreased usage in unassigned fund balance from, from about $15 million in '22 There was decreased usage and unassigned fund balance from about $15 million in 22 to just over half a million in FY23. The, let's see, we increased the employee contribution to health coverage. This is only the third time in 19 years that employees will be required to contribute more for their health coverage for them and their families. And that's over a time period when the total population of souls covered increased by 67%. So that the health benefit system is in need of some support in FY23. Again, there's increased funding in this budget for county public safety agencies, a modest increase to community partners. And again, the manager's recommended budget in FY23 maintains a current tax rate of 58.8 cents. And the next steps, we are conducting the public hearing now, and we hope for a budget adoption on the 13th. And anyone that's watching at home or would like to come back and review this presentation or review any of the documents included can go to the county website listed here to follow along and follow our social media portals as well that we generally communicate from. I'd like to make a special thank you or recognition to our county's Tax Assistance Office for all their hard work in helping us with refining these numbers. The county clerk's office, the county department directors and their budget finance staff, our IT team, our county finance director and staff, and the county manager and executive team, and of course, the budget team that I have the pleasure to work with on a daily basis. I'm very appreciative and fortunate to have them to work with. And with that, that's all that I have. I'll be happy to respond to any questions that maybe you may have.
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your presentation, Blake.
Sure.
First of all, when you look at fiscal year 2020, the fiscal year that we're looking into, fiscal year 2023, and the last fiscal year that we planned for, the one that we're now in, fiscal year 2022, would you say those two fiscal years are dissimilar or quite similar?
I would say they're different, just based on the situation that we were in going through COVID in 22, beginning in 22, kind of coming out of it now and leading into 23. There are some consistencies, but, you know, every budget year is different.
Well, for instance, in the planning for the fiscal year that we're now in, fiscal year 2022, were we able to utilize excess fund balance that was beyond our 20% required fund balance?
Yeah, in FY22, there was over $15, just under $15 million in available fund balance that was budgeted to offset one-time expenses, one-time capital purchases to increase our Pago funding, and a one-time injection of available fund balance that was really, that really only existed because of direct action that was taken in the year before to reduce spending based on the unknowns of COVID, and to use that as a one-time injection in 22. And then in 23, that's not available because we, you know, we used that as much as we possibly could. And this year, we're back in a normal trajectory of revenues and expenses in the county.
So that was about 16, 17 million that we were able to use in excess fund balance?
23.9.
Okay.
So the 15 is the general operating fund, and then the additional was specifically in the debt service fund. So that was planned to pay off debt over time to keep the...
But in terms of, for operations, between 16 and 17 million?
In the ballpark, yeah.
Okay. All right. And that was used for helping our county partners, like Union County Public Schools. It was used for Pago for some number of important capital projects. It was used, I think, for funding some of our OPEB, our post-employee benefit obligations. There were a number of things, but bottom line is, there were substantial excess funds in our fund balance, beyond the 20%, that we were able to utilize in this current fiscal year, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And additionally, this board also voted for a one-penny tax increase over revenue neutral, correct?
Yes, sir.
So those revenues were also available to the county to meet the needs of county general government, as well as the needs of our partners. Now, current fiscal year, we obviously don't have those excess reserves in planning in this fiscal year for the next fiscal year, correct? Okay. This board has not contemplated, nor do I think there's an appetite for a tax increase. Now, the environment for inflation, for increased expenses for general government, as well as our county partners, is that more of a pronounced problem or less of one?
The question of inflation?
Inflation. Is that more, is that a problem?
It definitely is.
Okay. Yeah, I think we can all agree it's a problem. Now, in terms of funding for general county government compared to funding for Union County Public Schools, how does that compare in terms of what we've, what we're increasing the cost of general county government versus increasing the local supplement for Union County Public Schools? How do those compare?
Sure. Just as the change in percentage, county services, when you take out, you exclude schools, EMS, and SPCC, county services will grow at 1.4%. And the school allocation for UCPS is recommended to grow by just over 5%.
Okay. All right. And it is, you know, I suspect this is true, I just want to get confirmation. Last year, we were able to satisfy most of the requests, I believe, maybe a little more than half of, from the Union County Public Schools to the Board of County Commissioners. Was it 60%, 70%, Chair Merrill?
68%.
68%? Okay, thank you. And this year, admittedly, it appears we're, the county manager's response is to satisfy less than half of the requests. But I think it's important to point out, again, the differences between the last fiscal year and this fiscal year. You know, it's a totally different animal. We have more constrained revenues. You know, we don't have the excess fund balance that's available. We aren't contemplating a tax increase. You know, some of us up here were excoriated for the tax increase, so that appears to be off the table. So what are our, you know, what are our alternatives? And I know I should probably pose this in the form of a question, but are there ARPA funds, are there ESER funds that may be available to the school system that perhaps can meet some of their obligations in the coming fiscal year? I mean, I know you're the county budget officer, but I'm kind of, you know, I'm asking that, you know, are there ways to meet some of these obligations with federal funds that we know have been appropriated by the US Congress? ESER funds that are available from the last fiscal year, that are available for the fiscal year that we're staring into, I think that's something that ought to be looked at. I guess the, you know, the last thing I would just kind of mention is, you know, we are in a tough environment economically right now. And revenues are more constrained, expenses are going up, we're all feeling it. And I'd just like to embrace the notion that I think, Vice Chair Hightail, you had mentioned when you were up here, which is a heart for the members of our board and your board to get together more regularly and to make sure that we are working together for the benefit of all of Union County. And I think there are wonderful opportunities for doing that, I really do. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Williams?
Observation I made, I think you said UCPS budget grew by 5.4%?
I believe that...
It was over 5.
With debt and operating, it's 5.03, just over. Operating, I think, is 5.3, and debt is a little bit less.
And South Piedmont was just 3.5. Why is there the difference?
The funding for SPCC and EMS both were tied to the expected growth of the penny value and the organic growth in the budget. So that's where it was tied to.
I can see the need, the extra need in South Piedmont as well. And I know for a fact, they actually educate a lot of UCPS students.
Sure.
And I don't know that they get reimbursed for all the costs associated.
And, you know, I'm prepared to make a motion to that end. I mean, I know that it would only take $47,073 of an increase to SPCC's operating ask to get it to 154,000. That would equate to a 5.03% increase in their operating budget. So I would definitely make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Blake.
Thank you.
All right. I'm going to reopen the public comments section.
Dennis, did you skip the GFO?
Sir.
GFO award? Or was that one?
No.
Okay.
This is still the public hearing on the budget, and...
As the esteemed Chairman Simpson said, I got this.
Excuse me, sir.
When you say something classic, I never let go of it. All right. I'm going to reopen for any public comments, if any, and hear them about the school funding.
This is for the entire budget, Mr. Chairman.
What?
This is for the, this is a public hearing on the entire budget.
And in my notes, I also recognize anybody signed up for informal comments.
That would be after the public hearing.
Well, that's not what whoever wrote this.
I'll do it one more time.
Okay. All right. I know the school board's got to go. We're going to move...
Mr. Chairman, before you close the public hearing, there was a question raised by Mr. Williams about ESER funds and the school system. We have the ability to answer his question right here, if you can allow him...
Yes.
...one of our speakers to speak either again or keep the hearing open to respond to his question.
Okay, come forward.
I think we've dealt with this before. We can't just use the money from ESER for anything. It has to be used for loss of learning and other things. Plus, we can't use it for operating, because where would we get the money the next year?
Well, as I understand it, from North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, you can use ESER funds for sustaining operations.
Shawna, do you want to take that?
I mean, I know there are restrictions on federal money, but I understood that the restrictions were a little less.
Currently, we have unallocated or unreserved of about $8 million. That is to get us through 2024. So if we were to use that for operating, we wouldn't be able to continue our tutoring or any of our other efforts to address learning loss in our schools. So...
Are those funds from 2020, or do they include the, basically, the ARPA funds that were passed under the Biden administration?
So we have several rounds of ESER funding that we've received. They all go through the Department of Public Instruction, and we receive policy manuals that give us our, and dictate to us how we can spend those funds. We have some that will expire this September, we have some that will expire next September, and we have until September of '24 on our last round. The majority of our funds have been spent, all the 20, all the funds that are to expire this September, and a good majority of the funds that expire next September have been utilized to this point. And we have some funds that we will use this summer to address some of the summer programmings that we are doing currently and are working to do in June and July. Does that answer your question?
Is ESER III, would that be the most recent round of ESER?
That's the last round. And ESER III was our largest allotment, and we are utilizing those funds. We are now starting to need to use some of those funds, again, to support some of our programming. Some of the funds we've received for summer programs are not sufficient to do the work that needs to be done this summer to address learning loss. So we're combining some of those together to address all of that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I'm going to recognize Beverly Lyles to do the 2022 bond reform request from UC...
Chairman. We need to close the public hearing.
I'm sorry. Close the public hearing for the school funding and school...
The entire budget.
Close the budget.
Budget public hearing.
Close the public hearing on the budget.
On the budget.
I move that we close the budget public hearing.
Okay. All in favor?
It's in the House.
Okay. Well, that's what I was following. Annabelle Rodriguez signed up to speak in informal comments. Is she here?
Yes.
Okay. Were you here when I read the conditions? State your name, address.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Annabelle Rodriguez. I am a resident of Mecklenburg County and soon to be Union County. I come here in representation of NAREP, the National Association of Hispanic Road State Professionals, and a member also of Liga, which is the legislative influencers of government affairs for this particular company, for this organization. And what we do mostly is, NAREP is the largest Latino business organization in the country with a mission to advance Latino homeownership as a primary strategy to close the wealth gap. Our State of Hispanic Homeownership Report that I have here to leave shows that we are currently 8.3 million Latinos aged 45 and under who are mortgage-ready but are not in a homeownership state yet. But there are simply not enough homes for us to purchase. I have several cases right now where I have clients that have wanted to purchase and put their house on the market to move to a bigger home to accommodate their family. However, we are not, we're not able to find what they need, whether the price is too high and/or there is not enough builder. We need to be able to build more homes in a medium income, for medium-income buyers at the root of skyrocketing prices and bidding wars and the massive underproduction of homes, particularly entry-level home ownership for owner occupants. We know that there is a house shortage across the board, and we need affordable housing, and we need rentals, but we need entry-level housing and homeownership most of all. A failure to address this shortage is detrimental for our economy and for many generations to come. The housing shortage is only getting worse every single day. So here are a couple of strategies that we present to Union County in efforts to bridge that gap. To implement zoning reform to allow more density, including buildings of condos, town homes, ADUAS, finished basements, efficiencies, and in-law suites. To rezone commercial properties or repurpose unused buildings for housing, including mixed-use development. To streamline a lower barrier of housing developments and permit approvals, I know all about that, unfortunately. And finally, to ensure that existing development plans include homeowner-occupant homes. To create funding for mechanics and grants for small business developers, which is what I personally work with the majority of the time. I appreciate... I appreciate this time that you have allowed me to speak to you, and I sincerely hope that our thoughts and what we bring to the table is heard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Lyles.
Chairman, you got someone other person signed up in informal comments?
Can't hear you. Any more? No, that's it. Okay. Gary, do you want to speak?
I'll speak under informal comments, or I'll speak when you get to the bond item on your regular chair. Doesn't matter to me, whichever.
This is, informal comments is the appropriate place for comments this time.
Hello again, gentlemen. My name is Gary Sides. I reside at 2829 Pulaski Drive in Monroe, and I am a resident of Union County. Tonight, I'd like to speak to you on the proposed Union County Public Schools Bond. Let the people decide. Some twenty years ago, we started a building boom at UCPS to accommodate the growth on our western part of our county. As that was happening, undertaken, there were a lot of people on the east side, the Parkwoods, the Forest Hills, the Monroes, the Piedmonts, that said, when will there be an investment in their areas, in their older schools, some sixty-plus years old? Well, that started several years back with our last bond proposal and the major renovations, rework additions to Sun Valley High School. Let us continue. So how did we get where we are tonight, where you'd be considering our bond request? Back in 2020, we came forward, the Board of Education came forward to the county commissioners with the same projects to request to be placed on the November 2020 ballot. Without specific comments, the board decided not to vote, not to pursue placing it on the ballot that year. Instead, an ad hoc committee was developed between UCPS and SBCC at the request of the commissioners to put together a ten-year long-range bond plan, capital building plan, which was completed and submitted without many comments, feedback, pro or con. So here we are, 2021. Your board, except for Mr. Williams, who wasn't on yet, you were on, 2021, excuse me, appropriated four-point-nine million dollars towards design costs for the two major projects that will be involved in this bond, Forest Hills High School and East Elementary. So this board has already made an investment in this bond program, of which those funds would be repaid after a bond referendum pass is approved by the citizens in November 2022. If this board does not vote to place that on the ballot, or it is defeated, then the county, I basically, I guess you're gonna be out those funds. So if it's not on the ballot, that four-point-million investment is gone. Now, there may be individuals on this board that don't support this bond package, parts of it, or even all of it. And you may decide individually to vote against it in November. That is your right. That's your vote. But since this board has already made a significant investment, and when we developed the ten-year plan as requested by this board, there was not any feedback of a negative nature, projects need to be reshuffled, don't like this, don't like that. I'm going to assume with both those points that this board looked favorably upon that plan. So what I'm asking tonight is for you to let the taxpayers, the stakeholders, the parents of UCPS decide. Let them decide. Put this bond on the ballot with a yes vote. We will continue investing in areas of this county that have older inadequate facilities of an age that approaches almost as old as me. So I ask for you to vote yes to place this on the ballot this November.
I agree with everything Mr. Sides said, let the taxpayers of Union County decide this. We also have, we bought the land next to Forest Hills High School, so we have some capital in this as well. So I went through the entire ad hoc committee, as did Mrs. Merrill, and we too thought that that's what this was all for with SBCC. And I hope that you let the taxpayers of this county decide this. Thank you.
Going once, going twice. Okay, Beverly.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Manager Watson. Today, as Gary Sides went over, a lot of the background information, we had created an ad hoc committee last year to put together a long-term educational capital plan. In March of 2022, Union County Public Schools and South Piedmont Community College both formally requested a special bond referendum be placed on the ballot for November of 2022. On May the sixteenth, you as a board was presented a presentation from myself with the property tax debt models to illustrate to you what would be needed as far as a property tax rate to support those requests. Today, as you are aware, we have with us in the audience staff from Union County Public Schools as well as South Piedmont Community College. If there is any questions directly related to the projects that they are requesting to be put on the referendum, they are here to help as well. Just to go over in summary, again, the requests from Union County Public Schools to begin with. The two major schools that they're requesting to be placed on the bond referendum is Forest Hills High School as well as East Elementary School. In addition to that, there are other miscellaneous projects that you've been presenting information on in the past. Is there any specific questions related to the particular projects that are on this bond referendum request? And I did want to clarify and point out, the four-point-nine million is already funded. It is not included in this particular amount. We have already issued general obligation bonds to cover the four-point-nine million this past spring. It was included in our two-thirds general obligation bond package. We have worked together with our financial advisor to put together your debt model that's being presented today. This request illustrates the difference in tax rate that would be needed once the bonds are issued and the debt service costs would come online. For the full request, the difference in property tax would be three-point-eight-seven pennies for the full request. Staff has requested that we also show you what would it cost if we only did a bond referendum request for the two large projects, for Forest Hills High School and East Elementary School. The property tax rate difference would be three-point-five pennies. If you don't have any questions about these debt models, I'll move on.
No.
South Piedmont Community College also presented their bond request to us, which included a Center for Entrepreneurship, an Aseptic Training Center, and a Public Safety Training Center. As you're aware, through ARPA funding, we have agreed to start funding the design and land acquisition for the Public Safety Training Center. In addition to that, the management team and staff here has recommended that we not include the five million dollars of the Aseptic Training Center in a bond referendum request, and that we look for other options this coming fall, once we have completed our audit, to determine if we can afford to pay for that on our own without entering into a bond request for that. So for South Piedmont Community College, the actual recommendation is only for the Center for Entrepreneurship to go on the bond referendum request. Again, this tax rate model demonstrates issuing bonds, and if they're approved, we would not issue and have to pay debt back until 2024. The difference of the property tax rate would be zero-point-eight-five cents of a penny. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you have about this request as well.
Beverly.
Yes, sir.
That difference of point-eight-five on this issue and on the previous issue for UCPS, you have this starting in 2024?
That is correct.
So we had start making payments in 2024?
That's correct.
Okay, so that we would have to have that money in hand, ready to make that payment in 2024? We don't start collecting it in 2024? We need to have it in hand?
It would be included in the 2024 recommended budget for the tax rate increase at that time.
That's what I wanted to do.
Yes, yes.
Any questions or discussion? Okay.
So the actions that you have before you tonight are two separate actions. You have to take separate actions on the Union County Public Schools request versus the South Piedmont Community College request. So we laid out two options for you for Union County Public Schools. And the actions needed to move forward is, the first is to adopt a resolution which directs the publication of notice and intention for us to apply to the local government commissions for approval of school bonds. The second item is to adopt the resolution, making certain statements of facts concerning the bonds and the interest rates, and pretty much saying you agree that we have the availability to increase taxes to pay for this particular bond. And then three, authorize the finance director to actually make the application to the LGC. So you have two options laid before you, and we'll open it up for your recommendation for action for Union County Public Schools.
Commissioner Simpson.
Can you clarify, excuse me, Beverly, can you clarify what you said about the two options? Is this the time that we make the decision on those two options with regard to the Union County Public Schools?
That's correct, yes.
And can you answer me, is it's with all the items requested or without?
Right, so the first option that we showed you was with all the items that they requested.
Yes.
The second item that we showed you, based on staff recommendation or management team recommendation, was just a bond referendum for Forest Hills High School and East Elementary.
Okay, and to my point, if it's all of the items, is that a one package, one vote by taxpayer? You don't get to choose each? In other words, you can't vote for Forest Hills and not East Elementary? Or not for a field house, but for the other?
Can you answer how the question would have to be on the ballot? Normally, we do it all in one. I would have to refer to legal if that can be broken out. So you can take action on the actual ballot question language at a later date?
You will be taking it at a later date.
That's what I was trying to clarify. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Commissioner Hayes?
I have no problem with presenting the bonds to the public. My personal preference, I understand that East Elementary and Forest Hills are tied together so that they would be one line item bond issue. My personal opinion, I'd like to see them, each item, additional item be listed as a separate, voteable line item for that bond, and let the people decide.
You know, I look at the whole amount of the debt that possibly could be issued. I look at the current economic environment, the current inflation environment, the current rate environment. I mean, we all see what long-term rates are doing. And as long-term rates continue to edge higher and higher, to my mind, I just think about how the debt service would be more and more onerous. Is that dispository in every question of, you know, not necessarily, but it's a factor, and it has to be a factor for this commissioner at least. I am not inclined to, for the UCPS bonds, I'm not inclined at this point to support any issuance other than bonds for Forest Hills and East. And that's how I'll be voting tonight.
Okay, anybody care to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to be sure we're clear that we're not determining bond language and what's gonna be specifically mentioned in that bond, I mean, the ballot this evening. Is that not correct?
The resolutions tonight, Richard can correct me if I'm wrong, is the intent to apply for the bonds to be on the ballot. You will be taking additional action in July and August for the actual ballot language that will go to the Board of Elections.
Thank you. So I will move, you want to do this in two parts?
Yes, please.
I will move that we adopt a resolution directing the publication of notice of intention to apply to the LGC for approval of school bonds. Adopt a resolution making certain statements of facts concerning the bonds and authorize the application to the LGC.
For Forest Hills and East Elementary? Which one are you gonna recommend? So there's specific?
I thought we didn't have to make that decision.
No, no, for all or for just Forest Hills and East? Does he have the printout for the motion?
Is that the fact that we have to state?
It's based on the dollar amount.
For Forest Hills and East Elementary?
Yes.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Can you state the dollar amount for that particular motion, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Adopt a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Union County, North Carolina, directing the publication of notice of intention to apply to the local government commission for approval of school bonds, and adopt a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Union, North Carolina, making certain statements of fact concerning proposed school bond issue, and authorizing the application to the local government commission for bonds as follows. Hundred-and-thirty-four million, four-hundred-and-five thousand of bonds to pay the capital cost of providing the design and construction of facilities for Union County public schools to consist of a new Forest Hills High School and East Elementary School. The acquisition of equipment and furnishings, therefore, and the acquisition of land or rights of way if necessary. And I would say that we were told by Commissioner Russian at our meeting after the election to not make any decisions that bound a future board because they would just be reversed. So I'll be supporting Commissioner Simpson's motion. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I caught what was said, I believe that you restated the motion more succinctly, and therefore, I'll withdraw my motion and yield to your motion.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor that authorizes us to go to the LGC for Forest Hills and East Elementary in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-four million, four-hundred-and-five thousand dollars. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
We ask that you take the same action for South Piedmont Community College, if you would like to move forward with a bond referendum request for South Piedmont.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
As a member of the Board Trustees, this has been, this particular item, a single item for South Piedmont Community College, has been long sought after. The Board Trustees has worked hard on this project, a lot of work been done. And so I wholeheartedly support placing that on the ballot for the taxpayer to make a decision on, and I'll yield to you to make the motion with regard to the amounts.
Okay. I make a motion to adopt the resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Union County, North Carolina, directing publication of notice of intention to apply to the local government commission for approval of community college bonds, and adopt resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the County of Union, North Carolina, making certain statements of fact concerning proposed community college bond issue and authorizing... and authorizing application to the local government commission as bonds as follows. Thirty-two point seven two five, thirty-two million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand of bonds to pay the capital cost of providing for the construction, renovation, improvement, equipment, and furnishing of facilities for South Piedmont Community College and the acquisition of land or rights of way if necessary. Any discussion? All right, if not, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
No.
Thank you. As mentioned before, the next steps in this process, in July, we will come back to you as a board, introduce the bond orders and adopt resolutions set in the public hearings. The public hearings will actually be held August the first. At that time, you will be adopting bond orders and adopting resolutions setting the actual special bond referendum. And we are required to file that with the Board of Elections by August the fifth. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Beverly. And if possible, let's take a five-minute break. Me and Vice Chairman Williams have been here since 2:30 today. We only meet twice a week, uh, twice a month, but we meet for a week at a time. Okay. This has been a wild ride for me. All right, we are going to move to item 22380, a GFoa Distinguished Budget Award. And Blake, I guess, who's going to present it to him?
You are.
Okay. We'll come up to the podium and then I'll, we're going to recognize Blake Hart for his Union County Budget Management Team for receiving the Government Finance Officers Association the GFoa Distinguished Budget Presentation Award in their first year as a new team. Background, the Government Finance Officer Association of the United States and Canada, the GFoa has announced that Union County has received the GFoa's Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for its FY22 budget. In order to receive this award, Union County had decided to file nationally recognized guidelines for effective budget presentation. These guidelines are designed to assess how well an entity budget serves as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, a communications device. Budget documents must be rated proficient in all four categories and the fourteen mandatory criteria within those categories to receive the award. This is the ninth consecutive year the Union County Budget Management Team Department has received this award. This total score received is the highest ever as a result of the creation and implementation of the county's first ever performance measurement program as part of the FY2022 budget. Come forward and I will give you what you've already got. And I am not surprised that you won. I hope you went up there and presented. I'm taking my coat off because on Chris's presentation, I'm ready to sign the purpose order that chiller to this building today. I told Patrick, turn it down. He said, well, the chiller's about to go out.
I can make that happen.
Okay. Staff recognition, I'm going to call on Liz Cooper to recognize Michelle. Recognize Michelle, I'm sorry.
There we go. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have two items on your agenda tonight. The first one, Mr. Gab, Charles Gab was not able to be with us, so we're going to move that to our next meeting. But tonight, we do have with us our lifesaver award recipient, or one of our lifesaver award recipients, Tisha Cruz. Tisha is a social worker in our adult services area of social services. And due to her attentiveness and actions, she helped save the life of a client who complained of shortness of breath. Tisha had a nagging feeling to check on the client well past working hours and she called him. This was a 91-year-old client who has since passed away. He admitted that he was having a hard time breathing and no longer had an oxygen tank for his home. She later found out that his oxygen levels at that time were 85%, which I think most everybody knows is that is not a good situation to be in. And they were particularly dangerous for this client because he had, he was suffering from congestive heart failure. Upon hearing that the client did not have an oxygen tank, Tisha called 911. Then she called the client's doctor to get an order for an oxygen tank and she made sure that the medical supply company got it delivered to his home that night. We recognized her for her actions at the end of April. And that's when she shared with us that the client had actually passed away since then. But the family had shared with her how much they appreciated the work she did because that gave them extra time with their father and how important that was to them and the and the work that she has done for him and his family and the community. So we wanted to recognize Tisha tonight. Her teammates are here, as you heard from the applause. And her children are here. And we want her kids to know how how special you are and we appreciate all the work that you've done and particularly for going the extra mile for this client. Thank you so much. One more, one more picture.
Okay, we move now to the consent agenda and I believe we've got Mr. Commissioner Haynes.
Yes, I would like to ask that we remove 22-360, the request for waiver fees for further evaluation.
Okay. We got a motion to remove 22-360. Do I have a motion to approve the amended consent agenda or do we need to vote on? So moved, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Okay. We moved the first item of business we've already dealt with. I thought Patrick was presenting this, Brian.
No, he convinced me I should do it.
I was sitting here wondering why Todd Barber graced us with this presence.
See if that'll come up on the screen. Chris is trying to get it up for us. Well, unfortunately, I think we're having some technical difficulties.
Evidently, Patrick knew more than he let on.
You want me to try it on a flash drive, Chris? I have it on flash drive. It's not, okay. Showed up on most screens. It's on the computers and the monitors. We'll go from there, I think. I don't want to hold you up with a long evening. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm here this evening. We received a request from the town of Indian Trail for a potential partnership. As you know, the county has, we have funded short line programs in the past to allow water lines to be extended to neighborhoods within our jurisdiction to provide water to communities that may have low-performing wells or wells with water quality issues. Indian Trail has a community that was in their 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 boundaries that they would like for the board to consider in a partnership for a extension of water lines. That property is actually the combination of two two roadways. It's Emerald Woods Drive and Green Tree Lane off of Lawyer's Road. It's approximately 24 properties with homes. There are some vacant lots in there as well, but it's approximately 24 lots with homes. The request would be to connect to the current system of water system and to extend water within that community for those residents. We did actually have our engineers review this and give a cost estimate. Understand, this is a cost estimate. It is not a bid. The prices could change based on actual bid prices. But based on what we know today for some of the costs that we've incurred for piping and for some of the other construction work, we estimate the total. piping and for some of the other construction work, we estimate the total cost of this project to be around $522,000. Indian Trail has asked that we do a 50/50 partnership in this, that they would fund 50% of the cost, asking that the county partner and fund 50% of the cost. Roughly, that would be, you know, a little over $250,000 if that's the actual cost of the construction. What we've estimated, though, is that if there were to be a budget overrun, that we would both go no higher than $400,000. In other words, we would, we'd anticipate that the project could go as much as $800,000. Indian Trail would cover up to $400,000. County would cover up to $400,000. If it is more than that, then we need to have a discussion about that in the project, but the, the request is that we fund 50% of it up to $400,000, each 50% of the total cost. We would recommend that, from the staff, that we use our ARPA funds for this. It's my understanding that the town of Indian Trail will be using their ARPA funds for this as well, and I think it's appropriate that we co-mingle those funds. It'll make it easier for us to manage the project that way. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. And I believe Mr. Barber here is from Indian Trail, if he'd like to say something.
I'll put you on the spot.
I wasn't prepared.
Well, that's your best, that's your best speeches when you aren't prepared.
Well, I've, just small potatoes. I just represent a trail, so appreciate y'all letting me speak. We had homeowners come in and, and we've seen the horror stories of well water, and they can't drink the water. They washed their clothes. Some of them, it's yellow, and they spent years. It's older neighborhood, and, you know, and we thought, well, you know, we're more than happy to pay half if y'all pay half. And the way I look at it is, is, you know, is if you do this, then, you know, you can do something good, and we're helping you pay for it. And if we can enter this partnership, I know these people greatly appreciate it, and it's one of those things with ARPA money and different things, that you're doing something good for people. And you're really, really, these people, some of them really cried out when we actually passed the motion to send this to y'all. Some of them actually cried, so, you know, sometimes we sit up here and we don't get to do something good, but I think this is a good opportunity for us to do something good together. Thanks for letting me speak. Appreciate it.
Todd, I'll be making that motion to pass it, and I just want you to know, I, we've developed a friendship, and you're the best mayor pro tem I've ever met. Of course, I ain't met a lot of them, but you're, but you're still, me and you-
I appreciate that, and every last one of y'all commissioners have been really kind to me and Indian Trail, and I greatly appreciate that, and I consider all of y'all friends.
Thank you. I'm surprised you didn't bring little Joe T. too.
Sheriff Kathy asked about him too.
Well, you heard how Brian's scared of squirrels, so the ferret might bother him.
But thank you.
Okay.
Any questions for me, Mr. Chairman?
This is gonna be a lot, the cost to Union County is gonna be about a fifth of what our usual short line extensions do. This is a win-win, and I'm just glad to be a, a fourth part of it. We got a motion to approve it. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. We got appointments to boards and committees. We gotta appoint one member to the South Piedmont Community Boards of Trustees and appoint one member to the Central Lina Workforce Development Board to serve as vocational rehabilitation representative to Union County. South Piedmont's Community Board of Trustees, one vacancy. The Union County Board of Commissioners elects three members to the South Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees. Gary Summerfield is one of the appointments to that board. Mr. Summerfield's term expires on June 30th, 2022. This vacancy has been advertised in accordance with the Board of Commissioners Rules of Procedure, and Mr. Summerfield has applied for reappointment. No other applications have been received for the vacancy. A letter was received from Billy F. Norwood, chairman, requesting consideration of the reappointment of Mr. Summerfield to another four-year term on the Board of Trustees. I, I know Jerry knows him being on the board, and I think Richard knows him and probably David. There's no finer man in Union County than Gary Summerfield, and he gives to the community. So I make a motion for us to appoint, reappoint Gary Summerfield to the Board of South Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees. All in favor?
Aye.
On the Workforce Development Board, the term of Mary Wall on the Central Lina Workforce Development Board as the vocational rehabilitation representative for Union County expires on June 30th, 2022. This vacancy has been advertised in accordance with the Board of Commissioners Rules of Procedure, and Ms. Walls has applied for reappointment by letter dated May 3rd, 2022 from David L. Holler. The Central Lina Workforce Development Board is requesting that Ms. Walls be reappointed to that board for another two-year term. I make the motion to appoint, reappoint Ms. Walls. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, resolution to revise the Board of Commissioners 2022 regular meeting schedule. We're only gonna have one meeting in July, and of course, July the 4th is on our usual meeting date. We're, we're gonna do the 18th, but I checked my calendar, and I'm going on vacation the 15th, so I requested that we make it the 11th. Is the 11th okay with everybody else? It's not fair for me to protect my date and encroach on somebody else's. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. County manager comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna yield my time to Mr. Patrick Nyland. He has a item to share with the board, but before I do, I just wanted to offer my condolences to Lynn West on the passing of her mother. Her mom was a employee at Union County Public Schools for a number of years, and I, but I first met her, she worked behind the counter at the Oasis Sandwich Shop, and I would go down there for lunch, and, and she would help prepare the hot dogs and things like that. But I will most remember her mom for the cream cheese mints that she made every holiday, and those were absolutely the best mints that you could ever put in your mouth. You talk about just melt in your mouth good, and every holiday season, she would make sure I got a tin full of those mints. And so I certainly will miss Lynn's mama, and I'll miss those mints as well, that I, my condolences go out to Lynn this evening. Patrick, would you share that item with the board?
Yes, sir. Earlier today, there was a traffic incident just outside of Human Services. Monroe Police tried to initiate a traffic stop on a known armed felon who had fled, fled Cabarrus County yesterday. He led police on a chase through four counties yesterday and ultimately got away. When Monroe tried to stop him today, he also tried to flee. He ended up crashing his car just outside of Health and Human Services and then fled on foot. Our emergency management department was in the area, and we're able to use the drones. We started a drone program a couple of years ago countywide, not just in emergency management, but they were able to locate this suspect in about 15 minutes and get him taken into custody. So who knows without, without that effort by our emergency management department if they would have found this suspect and if he would have been able to continue his, his crime spree. He was located with a nine-millimeter handgun that was loaded, so he was armed and, and dangerous. So we just want to say thank you to Monroe Police and emergency management for their, their dedication. I think this certainly goes above and beyond what they do, which is already a lot on a normal day, so just wanted to say thank you to all, them all.
Did you say it was an infrared drone?
We have infrared capabilities. I, I don't know if that's what they used to find him today, but they have, I believe they had all three of the drones we have up looking in different areas.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know it's late, but I just wanted to say, many of you may remember the Little Rascals series, and you may remember Alfalfa. And I will never forget the scene where Alfalfa is up in front of the class reciting "Charge of the Light Brigade." And that made an impact on me, and I've read that poem many times. "Charge of the Light Brigade," and, and it says, "Ours is not to question why, ours is only to do and die." June 6th, 1944, thousands of young boys did and died. D-Day, 1944. That's the day. Let's remember that.
Commissioner Haines.
I, I want to extend my condolences to Lynn. Lynn has been a rock for commissioners for a long time. She has been a blessing for this organization, and we do sympathize with her loss, because I know how close she was to her and her mother. So Lynn, just know that we all love you, and we feel sorry for your, for your loss. And Jerry, thanks for mentioning D-Day, because we've had the opportunity to rep, recognize our veterans, which, on Veterans Day, I participated in Indian Trails, they had a very nice service, and we appreciate that. With that, I hope everyone has a good evening.
Vice Chair Williams.
No comments, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I have no comments. Thank y'all all for all you do for the organization. You three sitting right there, y'all look like some pretty mean fellows. Todd, Chris, and Jeff Catan. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Aye.
Don't leave yet, Todd.